Good evening and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, November 15, 2011. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge. Commissioner Holder?
Heavenly Father, as we come this evening, we are seeking your blessings. As we head into this Thanksgiving season, let us be mindful of the many blessings that you bestow on us daily. Be with our troops as we are just finishing honoring our troops for Veterans Day. Be with them as they in harm's way every day. Be with our police officers and all of our public safety people, along with all of the employees of this county. Be with this Board of Commissioners tonight as we go about doing the business of Henry County, so that we will seek your insight in the decisions that we make. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Before we do that, can I request we move the planning and zoning to the down past, below Finance, because the applicant isn't here.
All right, we have a request to move P and Z down to the end of the agenda after Finance, and with that change being made, I'll ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Bowman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. We do have a couple of proclamations to present this evening, and the first one is going to be a proclamation in honor of Family Month, and who do we have here to receive that proclamation this evening? Okay? If you would, you can come to the microphone, and I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas we recognize the family as the fundamental unit of society and essential part of the cultural, social, and spiritual fabric that makes up our communities, and whereas throughout history, loving families have been the foundation of our society and a source of stability for generations, and whereas strong families provide children with the encouragement, support, and love they need to become confident, compassionate, and successful members of society, encouraging positive life choices, and whereas families spending quality time together facilitates the development of positive and open relationships between parents and children, influencing and upholding the values that have helped sustain our society throughout history, and whereas the state of Georgia has proclaimed the month of November as Family Month to celebrate and recognize the importance of families, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of November shall be Family Month in Henry County, during which we encourage quality time between parents and children in order to strengthen relationships and promote more positive outcomes for our society this 15th day of November, 2011. And if you would, you could give us your name and the organization that you represent.
My name is Daniel Mobley, and I'm representing the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
Okay. All right, if you would step over here, we'd like to make the presentation to you. We have one more proclamation to present this evening, and the Daughters of the American Revolution, Helen Busman is the Regent, is that your title Helen? Has requested this in honor of National Native American Heritage Month, and this time Helen, we are not going to have a brief executive session. I think the last time that the Daughters of the American Revolution were here, we had to have a brief executive session, and an hour and a half later, you received your proclamation, so we're not going to do that to you this evening. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by Native Americans and Indigenous people, whose customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas Native Americans stand among America's most distinguished authors, artists, scientists, and political leaders, and in their accomplishments, they have profoundly strengthened our rich legacy. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August of 1990, and continues to this day, with each November being designated as National Native American Heritage Month. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that November 2011 be known as National Native American Heritage Month, during which time we recognize the important contributions of Native Americans and the rich culture that they have provided to this country this 15th day of November, 2011. And Helen, if you would, come and make an introduction of the gentleman who will be receiving the proclamation this evening on behalf of this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am Helen Busman, and I am Regent of the Andrew McBride Chapter of the DAR, and I would like to introduce Mr. Alan Rowland of Cherokee descent, who will accept the proclamation on behalf of our chapter. We also have another member here, Ann Carden, who is of Cherokee descent, and we're happy to have her as well, and thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Would you want us over here for a second? We have just a few more presentations to make this evening. We're going to have presentations to the winners of the Parks and Recreation Photograph Contest, and Julie Hoover-Arns, Communications Director, is going to brief us on that. Good evening.
Good evening. For the past several years, Henry County has held a photography contest to acquire unique and interesting pictures of our parks and amenities. The photo contest gives local photographers an opportunity to share their talents, but what Henry County gains from it makes it so worthwhile. We are able to use these photographs to showcase all of the beautiful amenities that this community has to offer through our parks. We do so by featuring these photos in Parks and Recreation's annual calendar, as well as other publicity materials, including our website, advertisements, and other brochures. Tonight, we would like to present these photographers with certificates and prizes in appreciation of their significant contributions to our ability to promote our Parks and Recreation programs and amenities. We'd also like to take a moment to express our appreciation to the generous company whose sizable donation made this year's calendar possible. C L M sanitation contributed 100% of the funding for the 2012 calendar, without which this valuable promotional tool for Parks and Recreation would not have been possible. And now Chairman, if you'd like to read the names of the winners, we'll have them come forward for their certificate and prize.
First, we have Honorable Mention, Nature and Wildlife, Shane Matthews. Honorable Mention, People, Pets, and Play, Amy Houseworth. Honorable Mention, Sports and Action, Wendy Schubert. Third place, Bruce Fowler. Second place, Robin Newman. First place, Tricia Nail. Best of Show, John Minahan.
And if I could just ask all of the winners who are here this evening, if they could come forward so that I could get a picture of all of you with the Commissioners, that would be great. Thank you.
And I assume these calendars will be available at Park and Recreation over on, at Heritage Park on Lake Dale Road when those are printed?
Yes, we also make it available here.
I'd encourage everybody to stop by and pick one up. The photographs are absolutely spectacular, and it has all the Park and Rec events for the year on that calendar as well, and we certainly appreciate Parks and Rec putting that together each and every year. All right, we are going to skip planning and zoning since we've moved that to the end of the agenda, and we're going to move on to Animal Care and Control. The Board of Commissioners will convene as the Animal Control Board, based on our ordinance to hear the following dangerous dog classification appeals. The first one is a request from Brent Turner to appeal the classification of his dogs as dangerous, as defined by the Henry County Ordinance and Georgia State law. Our presenter is Jerry Yoder, Director of Animal Care and Control, Exhibit Number Six in your books. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. At approximately 3:30 on October 27, 2011, Animal Control received a call from our E-911 Department that dogs were attacking a person at the Preston Creek apartment complex. Upon arrival, Animal Control Officers found two bite victims, one an adult female and the second a male minor child. The dogs were circling the victims at the time Animal Control arrived, but they were not actively attacking. The dogs are both intact males, one is a purebred Great Dane, merle in color, and the second dog is a large mixed breed, brindle in color. The victims are Ms. Elizabeth Hubbard, the girlfriend of the dog's owner Brent Turner, and 10-year-old Mikhail Jackson. Mr. Turner was not at home at the time of the attack, but Mikhail was returning home from school when the dogs escaped from the owner's garage and attacked Mikhail without provocation. As you can see in the photographs that were provided to you, Mikhail suffered bite wounds to his face, his head, his neck, his arms, and his back. Ms. Hubbard was also attacked when she ran out of her apartment to assist Mikhail. As you can also see in the photos provided, Ms. Hubbard was attacked by the dogs with multiple injuries to her arms, shoulders, and legs. Georgia law in our Henry County Animal Control Ordinance, excuse me, defines a dangerous dog as a dog that according to the records of an appropriate authority, inflicts a severe injury on a human being without provocation on public or private property at any time after March 31, 1989. A severe injury is defined as any physical injury that results in broken bones or disfiguring lacerations requiring multiple sutures or cosmetic surgery, or a physical injury that results in death. Elizabeth Hubbard was transported via Henry County EMS to the Henry Medical Center for treatment of her injuries. Mikhail Jackson was transported via Henry County EMS to Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, Eggleston Hospital, for treatment of his injuries. The attack on both Mikhail Jackson and Elizabeth Hubbard were unprovoked, and as you can see from the photographs provided, the injuries to both victims fit the definition of severe injury. Both dogs are transported from the apartment complex to the Henry County Animal Shelter, where they remain. Mr. Turner was formally advised of the dangerous dog classifications on October 31, 2011. He advised at that time that he did not wish to sign his dogs over to the county and formally requested tonight's classification appeal hearing. At that time, he also advised that he had moved from Preston Creek Apartments and is currently residing with his mother on Denrick Drive in McDonough. On November 2, 2011, a certified letter was mailed to Mr. Turner at his address on Denrick Drive advising him of the date and time of tonight's appeal hearing. This afternoon, I did speak with Mr. Turner via telephone, who advised that he was aware of tonight's meeting and would be in attendance. I believe Mr. Turner and Ms. Hubbard are here, as well as Ms. Mitchell Mikhail's mother, if you have any questions.
Does any Board Member have a question for Ms. Yoder? Mr. Bowman?
Ms. Yoder, the, it was, it's, it appears that if someone hadn't have stopped the dogs, they may have killed this kid.
It's very possible. I mean, Ms. Hubbard was significantly injured, and she has to be credited with rushing out and literally throwing herself on top of Mikhail to prevent him from being injured further, and she was severely injured in the...
I read the file, it seems that there was another person that stopped and tried to offer blankets, and then the dogs...
The complainant was a visitor. She actually lived in Atlanta, and she was in the apartment complex visiting. She stopped to offer aid, and the dogs rushed her. She had to get back in her car, and then she dialed 911 and...
So I suppose if the...
Mikhail was a very lucky young man.
And the cable TV person is the person that was able to basically stop the attack?
I would think Ms. Hubbard, who was there, would probably be better suited to answer. My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they had the cable TV company to their apartment, and the cable TV company asked Ms. Hubbard to remove the dogs from the apartment and put them in the garage area, and she complied. We're unsure as how the dogs escaped the garage, whether the large male Great Dane jumped up and hit a garage door button, but they were able to escape the garage. The cable company, the cable installer, did go out and assist, and I know that several people were in his van as well, trying to escape the dogs.
Okay, that's all I have.
Does anyone else have a question for Ms. Yoder? Mr. Oletta?
Are there two dogs involved in this? Is that what I read?
I'm sorry?
Are there two dogs involved in this?
Yes, one is an adult intact male Great Dane, and the other is a large intact male brindle. It appears to me to be a rottweiler mix.
And they're both being labeled?
Yes, sir.
But they are owned by the same person?
Yes, sir, they are owned.
Oh, they are owned by?
Excuse me, both owned by Mr. Turner.
Okay.
They have been in the possession of Animal Control since the 27th of October.
On the bottom of this record, it says something about Connie Sanders? At the very bottom of the report that I have here, Field Activity Report?
Kissa Robertson, is this the one you're referring to?
Field Activity Report dated 10, printed 10-1, 11-1, excuse me.
We are hearing two appeals tonight. There are two appeals.
Okay, it's attached to this one's what I'm trying to figure out.
I'm not sure why it's attached. But the dogs are owned by the same gentleman, Mr. Turner? When we verified rabies vaccines on the two dogs, the veterinary clinic advised us that Ms. Sanders was the owner of the brindle dog. Ms. Sanders is Mr. Turner's mother.
Okay, so that's how they named you too. And that is mentioned as a brindle pit bull mix?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions from Ms. Yoder? Okay, if not, I'd like to ask that Brent Turner, who is the owner that filed the appeal, if you would come forward, please. Ann, good evening. At this time, we'll allow you to present your case.
Do you mind if my girlfriend comes up here first, because, so she can pretty much tell a different story about what actually happened?
Certainly. If you could, please state your name.
Elizabeth Hubbard.
And what would you like to share with the Board?
Well, the dogs did, they, I did, she was right up, the charter guy came over, and I put him in the garage, because he didn't want him out in the house, and Zeus did jump up and hit the button. He's this tall, he's up to my hip, so when they got out is when, I guess, Mikhail was walking by, and I heard the garage door open, and I ran downstairs, and I saw them running around, and the dogs were chasing them, and as soon as I got over there, he wrapped his arms around me, I guess, to get away from the dogs, and I was like trying to get the dogs away, and that's when the attacking started. So, I mean, it wasn't, like, I let the dogs out, they, Zeus, I guess, jumped up and hit the button, so it wasn't intentional.
You do understand that the hearing tonight really is, doesn't have anything to do with your actions, but it has to do with the actions of the dogs once they left the garage area, and whether or not the dogs should be classified as dangerous. We're really not here to judge your actions in this case, it's just whether or not this classification needs to remain with these dogs. Mr. Turner, is there anything that you would like to add?
I just believe that my dogs were trying to protect her from when the kid grabbed her, because she was, she told me that when the dogs actually got out, they weren't attacking him until he ran and grabbed her.
Were they circling him? Were the dogs circling him?
That's what she says.
So they were circling him before...
Well, he was running, and they were just chasing behind him, like playfully, it looked like to me, until I got out there, and then he wrapped his arms around me, and then, I mean, and that's when it happened, so...
But once they started attacking, it took someone else's intervention to get the dogs off of you and the young man, but...
Yeah, the cable guy came out and yelled, "Get over here," and they just, they just stopped, they sat down like nothing ever happened. I guess the male voice or something just made them stop, snap out of it, and they just sat down like nothing, like they weren't doing anything wrong.
Mr. Bowman?
Right here, the field advisory report from a statement that you gave the Animal Control, says that you stated that you ran outside and saw the dogs chasing a child, and that you stated that you yelled at the child to stop running from the dogs.
Yeah, because they were chasing him.
The dogs attacked the child. Ms. Hubbard stated that she ran out to protect the child after the dogs attacked the child, and the dogs then attacked her and the cable company person, so which one is it? That's totally separate from what you gave. What we have is your statement to the Animal Control.
And I was...
Which one is it?
It was the one I just told about. They were running after him when I got out there. Yes.
And you yelled at him to stop running from the dog?
Stop running, yes, and then when I got over there, he wrapped his arms around me, and they started attacking.
That's just a different story than what's been printed here. The statement that you gave the Animal Control is different from what you just stated here.
Right, but I didn't write that statement.
Officer James Cannon is the officer that worked the call, and he is here this evening?
I think it'd be good to have him come up, because it's a totally different story from, it's totally different than what is put in here.
That's what you stated when you were in the hospital, with your parents standing there, and wrote everything down, exactly what you said, word for word, and you also stated in the hospital that you didn't want to be around these dogs anymore. I can only, I can only write what I'm told.
Right.
Yes, when this attack started, where was the child?
He was, our apartment's right here, and he was off in the grassy area over here, running around in circles.
In his own yard?
No, this is apartment complex, this is right next to my apartment.
I understand, okay, well, you said he was in the grass, was it like on the shoulder or...
There's a parking lot, and then there's a grassy area, and then right before the pool.
Okay.
And that's basically our backyard.
Like in a driveway?
Sorry?
Question? Mr. Oletta?
If you could, please, since there's protesting or whatever, the classification, could you define what that classification does as far as the conditions, restrictions, or putting dogs asleep, or what does it all mean when a dog is classified that way?
A potentially, a dog, a dog that bites unprovoked can be classified as either potentially dangerous or dangerous. Dogs that are classified dangerous meet a certain criteria for the severity of the injuries that they caused. In order for Mr. Turner to have these dogs returned to him, there are certain stipulations and certain restrictions. One is he must obtain $100,000 worth of personal liability insurance per dog, or a surety bond in the amount of $100,000 that would cover anybody that was injured from his dogs. He would also have to erect an escape-proof enclosure that the dogs could, would have to be in, top, bottom, and locked. If the dogs are outside of that enclosure, they must be leashed, and they must be muzzled. Additionally, the dogs were required to be microchipped with the information that the dogs have been classified as dangerous, and there is a $100 a year annual certification fee. The Animal Control Officers have to visit the dog owner's home once a year to certify that the dogs are being maintained according to county ordinance and state law.
Okay, I just want to get that out there as to what is trying to be changed here from one classification to another, obviously, and what really is at issue here is what the owners got to come up with in doing that, and I would think with the escape-proof enclosure, seeing that the dog is tall enough to figure out how to get out of the house by himself, it seems like that's an appropriate thing to be doing, for sure. The other, two other things, one is I noticed, according to the report, it also says that the dog was due for a vaccine, rabies vaccines and H24, it doesn't say whether the dog got the vaccine.
One, the dog has not yet been vaccinated. One dog was current on its rabies vaccine, the other dog was not current.
Was not current, okay, so we have an owner here who is considering they're not dangerous, but has not complied with the request of having on-time vaccine shots as well. And the other is, I guess this is for the owner, I read here that the owner came to the shelter and stated that he had been asked to move from Preston Creek Apartments. Why were you asked to move from Preston Creek Apartments?
Because of the attack.
They gave us one day to move out.
So basically, the people in the apartment felt enough that they didn't want, you were the dogs in the apartment than living there?
Yes, sir, but we also went there, she went there when I was at work, and I got a petition signed by my next-door neighbor and the next apartment over from me, and they were saying that my dogs have never been aggressive toward anybody. They see them all the time, there's even little kids that come up and pet my dogs all the time. There's never been aggression toward anybody.
But that's two people, your next-door neighbors, and you have the other apartment owners or somebody at the apartment, deemed it enough to say to you that they didn't want you living there? there?
Well, it, I'm not exactly sure why. They, they just gave me a day to move out. They, there's a letter, I don't have it with me, though.
It said, because of the current attack or whatever, you know, we broke our lease or something, they're going to break our lease for us, so, and they're like, you have one day to get out.
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Hubbard, you had a question?
I did. You'd indicated that there were basically no, we are, at the apartment complex, and I see where you have moved to a different location, but at the apartment complex, there was no real yard. Were those dogs housed 24/7?
No, I took them outside.
We, we exercised with them, we reined with them, you know?
On leash?
Yes.
And there was no restriction from the, from the apartment complex or covenants that would prohibit animals or dogs from vaccination?
If I ever took them, whenever I took them to my mom's, she has a big backyard to where they can run around.
That's not my question, though. In the apartment complex, was there a covenants that prohibited dogs or number of dogs?
I don't know, but we have found out that there is now.
There is now, they put one.
That happened.
Yeah.
Okay.
They, it was an animal-friendly neighborhood.
Madam Chair, if Ms. Mitchell is Mikael's mother, she'd like the opportunity to speak...
I'm a little bit frustrated because what's being said here is so untrue. My son is 10 years old, my son is terrified of dogs. He's only been around three dogs in 10 years that he is comfortable with. My son won't pet dogs that he don't know because of his fear. Let me correct something that was stated on the other side. There has, I've been in this apartment complex for 18 months and there is, and at least not just started, that there are certain dogs that should not be there. Rock walrus, pit bulls are too. That's why they got evicted because they had dogs that were vicious, that were not allowed at the apartment and they didn't claim them. So if you knew that you weren't supposed to have these dogs or if you had the proper dogs, then you wouldn't have a problem with claiming them on your lease. There is a 250 fee for each dog that's on the lease and rock walrus and pit bulls are not allowed. I've seen the Great Dane before. I've never seen the pit visually, but I've heard him because I just had a three-month-old. And when I walked in the evenings, he sat at the bottom of the steps because I would hear him growl as I walked by. Never seen him, but I heard him. Also talked to the courtesy officer yesterday, he has stated the same thing. Heard him, but never seen him. My son stated, I didn't bring him because I didn't want to put him through this again because my son is sitting in a psychiatrist. My baby was walking home. He said that the dogs darted out the garage. He immediately took his shoe off because it was one in front of him and one behind him. And he tried to get the dogs away from him. So he tried to run to the apartment, which is two apartments down from where David's at, and the dogs came out. They were already attacking him, her three people that I've talked to, when she came out to put her body over them. Now, when the people that were there saw this thing, even the cable guy, the cable guy is inside his cart, one of the maintenance guys also stated when he heard what was happening, he drove around in the golf cart and as soon as he pulled up, the dogs immediately turned towards him and got ready to attack him. So he had to pull out because he's in the golf cart. He's also in the cab, in the, in the van with the cable guy. Also a young lady that came out of her apartment with the gun that stated, "Somebody shoot him because they would not back off of him." She also stated, "No, don't shoot my dogs." Well, my 10-year-old is laying there with a gash in his head that's big and cuts all over his body. They were evicted because of what they had over there they shouldn't have. Now, his neighbor that stays next to him that made this statement for him saying that his dogs have never attacked, I also saw his neighbor yesterday and I reported to the police department. He has a pit bull that's not allowed in the apartment complex. So of course I'm gonna say that your dog is not vicious when I'm doing the same thing that you're doing and I have a problem with that. I applaud her and I appreciate her for what she did because it could have been worse. But my baby is traumatized. My baby has stitches in his head, in the back of his head, on his forehead, underneath his arms, he has bites from the top of his head to the bottom of his feet from what was done to him by these dogs which were not provoked. All he was doing was walking home from the bus stop.
Mr. Holmes?
Are certain breeds automatically classified as dangerous?
No, sir. We don't have breed-specific legislation in Henry County. Of course, apartment complexes are allowed in their covenants to pick and choose what animals that they'll allow on the property, but Henry County does not have a breed, any sort of breed-specific legislation. Mr. Stany, you have a question?
Yes. Mr. Turner, these, both these dogs belong to you, correct?
Yes, sir.
You had these dogs, how long have you had these dogs?
The Great Dane is probably nine months and the other dog is four years old, I believe.
And you've owned them both for that period of time, the four-year-old?
Yes, sir.
How long have you lived at the apartment complex?
Two years, I believe.
Has these dogs been in your possession in that apartment complex for two-plus years? And it was against the leasing?
No, okay. Also, I would like to state that when we first moved in, we signed for the dogs and everything. They didn't have a problem with it.
They never said anything to us about it. And we just got Zeus, he was only nine months old and we got him when he was six weeks old.
And also, the next lease we signed, somehow that's not there anymore.
It didn't, it didn't have it on it. When we resigned the lease to live there longer, it didn't have it on it. So I guess we thought it was continued from the first lease. We've been through three different managers, management since we've been there, so.
Hey, let me ask you something, just a second, let me finish with this. The gentleman who went to the hospital, the officer went to the hospital, right?
Officer Cannon.
You interviewed her in the mercy room, correct?
Yes.
And you made the statement that you wanted to stay away from the dog? What was the statement that she made?
She, I asked her how she felt about it, said she didn't want to be back around the dogs no more and her parents were standing there.
Your parents, your parents were in the mercy room with you when you made the statement?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah. That was up to time. I mean, of course, I'm gonna say that, but I don't know. I really don't know how I feel about it, really.
I, I think you did a very brave act by saying you possibly saved that child along with the cable guy. But I have to go back to the original statement. You, you were traumatized too by these own dogs.
Yeah, I was and they took me first before Mikael because they said my vitals were so messed up, I was passing out in the, in the ambulance, I threw up twice. They said my vitals were so out of whack that they had to rush me to the hospital because they thought I was, I don't know, that they were gonna, like, something was wrong with me, seriously wrong with me.
One last question. What would you say the weight of these dogs are?
The Great Dane, they, do y'all know how the weight?
I'd say the Great Dane's probably 80, 90 pounds. The mix is probably about 70.
85 pounds, yeah, he was 85.
So both of them are pushing 90 pounds, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mikael probably weighs what?
He's about 85, 80 pounds, he's a, he's a small, he's a small 10-year-old.
Was your son ever in her arms, beside when she was on top of him or did she ever, did he, your son ever run to her?
He never stated that. He ran to her. He said he heard, he never stated that he ran to her. What he stated to me and what he stated to the officers when they came to make the report is that he was outside and he started screaming and then the lady came from somewhere and was trying to get the dogs off of her and then she laid her body over his. She, he said when he took off running, the dogs just started biting him. I don't know why they bite me, they just started biting me. And then that's when she came and she placed her body over him. She says her injuries are worse than my son, but my son has a huge hole in his forehead. He has cuts and stitches all in the front of his face. He has two, three thick gashes in the back of his head, stitches underneath his arms, bite all over his body. I saw her picture, they were severe, but not compared to what my son, what my son had to go through.
One last question. At what point did you get on top of the boy?
Um, well, I was trying to, I was trying to get the dogs off and I was shooting them away and they, they wouldn't stop. So I just, you know, I kept trying to turn them and turn them to get the dogs away and they were just biting me and then it just moved off. I tried grabbing their collars to hold them back, but they were just pulling me with them to, and finally I just threw myself over the boy on the ground in the, in the middle of the road and they, that's when, like, a few minutes later is when the cable guy finally came out and yelled, "Get over here," and they finally stopped. And I just sat there with them, covering over them so the dogs couldn't get to them until the ambulance finally got there.
Is by chance the cable guy in the room?
No, sir. He, I have to go to court December 1st, I believe.
Second.
December 2nd and he'll be there.
He'll be there.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, I know you've said your son is in counseling his, is he gonna have to have cosmetic surgery because of these bites?
Yes, he's going to dermatology in two weeks because the cut that's over his face is still raised. Also, one of the, one of the ones that are in the back of his head is still raised and we're looking at the discoloration and also on this right arm. Because just until about three to four days ago, he went to the, last Tuesday when he went to the doctor, he was never able to move his arm past this distance from the day he got home. He's actually able to move it more, but he still guards his arm. So we go to therapy every, we're going to physical, the psychiatrist every Tuesday, every single Tuesday in the evenings and then he's going to the dermatology in a couple of weeks when he gets back.
Mr. Turner, did you see any of the photographs of this child?
All I saw was on the news. I didn't get to see all the photographs.
I would encourage you to take a look at those photographs. Those are, those are serious, serious bites. They're, they're not just skin scrapes. Mr. Oletta, you had a question?
Mr. Turner, you indicated that you felt that because he wrapped his arms around her is why the dogs attacked. Just one second.
Oh, okay.
If that's the case, then why are they biting her?
Because she hovered herself over the kid and accidentally bit her on my...
She was swinging to keep them away and they were biting her.
Sorry.
So it doesn't sound like they were protecting her. It sounds like she was being the victim as well. I guess the other is that we have a, a traumatized, you stated, Mr. Hubbard, you, you were traumatized. Your vitals were bad at the hospital.
My adrenaline was up.
Army?
I said my adrenaline was up so high, they...
No, you just a minute ago said your vitals at the hospital are very bad.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
They were.
Here is a victim who has no recourse to take care of the surgeries, possibly some, some medical care, et cetera, because there is no insurance in place for a dog that has done this. And I guess I have a question and it's, is what am I missing that you don't see that this dog is dangerous and that what the county is asking you because of this classification and what's happened, which is to put insurance in place of victims that may in fact, where you don't think it will and it already has, aren't entitled to protection from you and your dogs for the amount of money that's been asked to be put up if you want to keep your dogs?
That was what I was told or thought I heard was that we were coming here tonight to state if they were gonna be considered vicious dogs or dangerous dogs and if not, then I was getting the insurance.
But, but again, you're sitting here fighting, standing there fighting that these are not dangerous dogs and I'm asking the question based on what I just said, how is it you can stand there, both of you, and say these are not dangerous dogs and the county and the victims that make, that have already and don't have insurance, that you don't have insurance or a bond already, are not entitled to protection from here forward?
They've never attacked anybody other than this and I...
But they have.
Yes, sir.
No further questions.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Turner, is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No more.
Okay, Ms. Mitchell, Ms. Yoder, anything else you'd like to add? All right, I know Mr. Holder stepped away and will be coming back, Mr.?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to wait till the last minute, but, um, this is my best friend. I just wanted to add...
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Phil Castillo. I just wanted to add to the story. I think a big part why the dogs were at edge and why the attack happened, they didn't state that, that their house had been attempted to get broken into twice and the door got kicked in and also, I'm not saying that your son was part of it, but he stated that kids used to come banging on the windows and on the garage door antagonizing the dogs. And I've been with him since day one, I'm actually the one that picked out the dog and we've actually kind of messed with him, trained him to protect us. Not viciously, but you know, just messing around with him. And if anybody, like, playing with him, I would come up to him, you know, acting like I'm, like I'm hating him or something like that, you know, just to see the dog's reaction. And he's always acted, he'll let you know back up, but he, he's never done anything vicious. Like, he just lets you know, that's, that's my owner, that's my master. So I mean, like, I apologize for the attack, but there's a lot of situations...
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you because I don't, this is really not relevant to what we're discussing tonight. We're discussing the incident that happened with this child on this occasion and so this, your comments are really not adding anything to the conversation we're having about the classification of these dogs.
So nothing about the antagonization?
Well, you were, you were not there when this happened and so had you been a witness to the event, then you would certainly have something to contribute to the conversation. Mr. Oletta?
I would add that what your comments are saying are actually going against what you're talking about because what you basically just said, no child is safe walking up and down the street. Just because this dog, or the house was broken into, this dog is protecting, was trained to do so, and this child was walking the streets, not banging your door down. So basically, any child walking the streets unsafe. You just didn't help the case in any, in my opinion.
Thank you. Is there any further questions from the board on this issue? All right, I'm gonna, because this is unusual from what we usually do as a board, we have, we have three options here tonight. We can, one, we can up, we can uphold the designation, the classification as a dangerous dog based on the recommendation of the Director of Animal Care and Control based on our ordinance. We can overturn that. We can delay a decision and think about it for 10 days. So those are the options that are available to us as the Animal Control Board. Whatever motion you choose to make tonight, I'd ask that your, your motion be in the form of a motion to convene as the Animal Control Board and recommend, and then recommend your decision based on that as the Animal Control Board.
I'd also add, if the resolution, the motion can include the effective date of that decision. So if the decision is to uphold the classification, that the effective date of that classification be a part of the motion.
All right, and would that be the date that the animals were taken into custody or...
The effective date of your decision.
Of our decision.
Yes.
Okay, which would be November the 15th of 2011. With that being said, I will look to the board to make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we convene as the Animal Control Board and also make a motion that we uphold the Animal Control decision as to a dangerous dog.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to convene as the Animal Control Board and to uphold the dangerous dog classification effective November the 15th, 2011. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Oletta, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, we have a request from John and Catherine Williams to appeal the classification of their dog as potentially dangerous as defined by the Henry County ordinance and Georgia state law. That's going to be exhibit number seven in your book.
At approximately 6:20 PM on October 4th, excuse me, 2011, Animal Control received a call from the E-911 Department to respond to a dog bite on Happy Trail in Locust Grove. Locust Grove Police Officers were on scene at the time of Animal Control's arrival. The Animal Control Officer found one bite victim, a male minor child. The child, Cody Lowry, had obvious puncture wounds and bruising on his right upper arm. The dog in question is a black mixed-breed female dog named Lacy, who is owned by Catherine and John Williams of Victory Lane in Locust Grove. At the time of Animal Control arrival, the dog had been restrained inside the owner's residence. The victim stated he was outside in his yard with his small dog. The Williams dog was unrestrained and entered onto the Lowry's property. Cody Lowry stated he bent down to pick up his small dog, which is a Papillon that weighs about five pounds, when the Williams dog lunged and bit him on the upper arm. The bite was unprovoked. Tonight, Mr. Lowry, Ronnie Lowry, Cody's father, did sign a permission for the board to view the photographs that we have of Cody's bite. He does have two puncture wounds. And I don't know how clear they're gonna be. I don't know how clear they're gonna be, but I can certainly bring them up. He does have two puncture wounds and significant bruising to his upper right shoulder. Dog owner John Williams, who was not, was not at home when the incident occurred, but Ms. Catherine Williams was home. She stated that the dog did not have a current rabies vaccine and that she would bring this dog to the shelter the following day for the required 10-day quarantine. Citations were issued to Mrs. Williams at that time. Georgia law and our Henry County ordinance define a potentially dangerous dog as any dog that without provocation bites a human being on public or private property at any time after March 31, 1989. Cody Lowry was seen at primary pediatrics for treatment of his injuries. A review of the shelter records showed that this is the second incident that we've had at the Williams' address. The first incident occurred on December 19th of 2009, when Animal Control received a complaint regarding a different dog owned by the Williams' as being at large and acting aggressive. In that instance, the dog did aggressively charge the responding Animal Control Officer, and the officer had to defend himself with his catch pole before Mr. Williams came out of the residence and restrained his dog. At that time, an officer opted to issue Mr. Williams a written warning for his dog being at large and for his dog being a public nuisance and attacking passersby. On October 5th, Ms. Williams did bring Lacy to the shelter for quarantine. Originally, she stated that she would be signing the dog over and she would not be reclaiming the dog. However, she changed her mind the following day. I advised her via telephone that if the dog was going to be reclaimed, that I would have to classify the dog as potentially dangerous. I also spoke later with Mr. Williams via telephone, who stated that their intent was to give this dog away to a fellow coworker of Mr. Williams, who resides in another county. I advised Mr. Williams that the classification did not mean that he could not give the dog away. It would mean, however, that the classification would follow this dog, and he would be required to give me the contact information of any new owner so that the Animal Control Department in the new community could be contacted, as is required by law, to inform them of a classified dog moving into their community. On October 6th, Ms. Williams came to the shelter, and at that time received official notification of the classification. The Williams have completed the restraining signage requirements for possession of a potentially dangerous dog. This was verified by Animal Control Officer Michael Jenkins. So, the Williams were allowed to reclaim their dog from the shelter on October 14th. At that time, Ms. Williams completed the required classification appeal form for tonight's meeting. On the 21st of October, the Williams were notified via certified mail of tonight's classification appeal. This afternoon, I did speak, speak to Mrs. Williams via telephone, who advised that she was aware of tonight's meeting and would be attendance, and I do believe she is here.
Does any board member have a question for Ms. Yoder?
Madam Chair, would you let me bring this up?
Sure. If there are no questions, I'd like to ask Ms. Williams, if you would, please step to the microphone, and we're ready to hear, hear your case.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for taking the time to hear this case. The incident that the Animal Control Director is referring to, I feel does not meet that classification. According to the field activity record narrative written by Michael Jenkins, the responding Animal Control Officer, Cody was walking with his dog when our dog, Lacy, approached, and a fight between the two dogs ensued. Cody attempted to remove his dog from the fight and was bitten on his right upper arm. I've always been told never to stick my hands or try to physically touch a dog while it is in a fight. Their adrenaline pumping, they're unaware of what's going on around them, they're just all snappy-snappy. And I have taught my children that when you see dogs fighting, you should run and get an adult immediately. I do believe that dogs should be on a leash. I have a fully fenced backyard. I've, I also have four children, and unfortunately, on this occasion, one of my children opened the front door and the dog darted out. And immediately, my sons ran after the dog. And I have attempted to correct the front door opening and the dog darting out. We installed a spring-loaded storm door to keep, to prevent that from happening again. I just wanna state that according to, I was, I did not see what happened. But according to what my children have told me, that my dog didn't run up and attack Cody. And it, he, they were in, my dog came trotting up and, and the dogs started barking at each other, and a fight ensued between their dog and our dog, and Cody tried to reach down and grab his dog. And that is when he received the bite wound. Both of us, both the Animal Control Officer and myself have had to rely on things other people told us. At the time that the Animal Control Officer investigated this incident, he did not, to my knowledge, acquire written statements from the child, from Cody, from Cody's parents, certainly not from my children, who were the other two witnesses to this incident, or myself. And at this time, I'd like for my son to be able to tell you what he saw that day.
My youngest brother Max-
Could you please state your name, please?
Sorry. My name is James Smith. My youngest brother Max opened the front door, and our Siberian Husky dog, Lacy, darted out. I immediately ran after her, along with my younger brother Jackson, who was in the fourth grade, I believe. And she went around the neighborhood and trotted up along Cody's dog, out of curiosity, you know? And Cody's dog barked, my dog barked, and they started snapping at each other. I told Cody to grab his dog's leash and pull his dog back so I could grab my dog. But before that, I grabbed the smaller dog, which also ran out, her name is Lucy. And I grabbed her, and I gave her to my younger brother Jackson to take her that home. By the time I got back to Lacy, they were still fighting, and Cody has already gotten bit. He got bit because he leaned down and tried picking his dog out of the fight. And we got the dogs separated, and he went inside, and I grabbed Lacy and went home.
Madam Chair, I would advise that the Lowry's dog weighs five pounds. There's, the dog has, has no injuries. The Williams' dog weighs at least 50 pounds.
I actually have veterinary records stating that she weighs, I don't have him with me tonight, but she weighs 30 pounds.
If she weighs 30 pounds, the Lowry's dog weighs five pounds, so-
Just for the record.
Conceivably, if there is a dog fight here, there would be no way that the, the Lowry's dog would have survived such a fight. And Mr. Lowry is also here to attest, Mr., his dog is not injured in any way.
If you don't mind, can I finish stating? They were snapping at each other, the dogs were. I wouldn't say it was all-out brawl, from what I've heard. Just dogs snapping at each other in the face. At any rate, in a letter I received from Ms. Yoder informing me of her decision to classify my dog as potentially dangerous, she stated her reason for her decision as follows, and I quote, "On October 4th, 2011, while running at large, your dog, a female, black, tan, white, mixed breed named Lacy, entered onto the property of a neighbor and bit a minor child, causing bite wounds to the child's upper right arm. The context in which the bite occurred was not taken into account, I don't believe, in the decision-making process, which does not meet the Henry County Code 3-4-5-4, subsection A, which states that the Dog Control Officer, upon receiving a report of a dangerous dog or potentially dangerous dog within Henry County from a law enforcement agency, animal control agency, rabies control officer, or County Board of Health, shall make such investigations and inquiries with regard to such report as may be necessary to determine the validity of such report, and whether the dog should be classified as dangerous, a dangerous dog or a potentially dangerous dog, or reclassified if the dog was already classified as dangerous. If the narrative of the Animal Control Officer had been regarded, it would have been made apparent that this bite was received due to an altercation between two dogs. The Georgia and Henry County Codes do not say that you can classify a dog as potentially dangerous for attacking another animal. I do not believe my dog attacked Cody. Cody has played at our house for many years, in our backyard, with Lacy, our dog, and our other dogs. And we have never, ever, ever had an issue with Lacy or any of our dogs acting aggressively towards a human being, including a child, including Cody. So, what happened that day and the narrative of the Control Officer, I don't feel, fit the definition of a potentially dangerous dog. And when you look into case and its context, Lacy did not bite a human being without provocation. She was in a scuffle with another dog. Unfortunately, Cody got bit because he was trying to get his dog out of the fight. So, thank you for your time.
Jerry, can you, I know I've been on the board seven years, and Warren, you've been on here much longer. This is only the third appeal that I think has come before this board since I've been here.
Third or fourth, yes ma'am.
I'm assuming that this isn't, these classifications are not randomly done and, and done a lot. Can you address the, what Ms. Williams stated about the classification and how you came to that conclusion?
Our investigation showed that Cody was in his backyard with his small dog, and that when the dog came up, Cody picked his dog up, and at that point, the Williams' dog jumped up and bit Cody on the upper arm. There was never any indication from anybody that there was an altercation. Mr. Lowry has never, we, Mr. Lowry and I have had multiple conversations. There is no injury to Mr., to Mr. Lowry's dog. And at no time has the victim or anybody stated, since October 4th, that there was a dog altercation. Only that Cody was in his backyard. The, Ms. Williams did very honestly tell me that her children do open the door and let the dogs run at large. And that the, the child was bitten in his own yard, unprovoked.
If you would look at the narrative of the field activity record from the officer, the nine-year-old victim was out walking his dog on a leash when the canine, case canine, came from 350 Victory Lane and started attacking his dog. Victim went to pick up his dog when he was bitten on the right arm by the mixed breed dog. So, it's right there in the narrative that there was-
But at no time was there a dog fight that Cody attempted to break up. His, the dog, your dog rushed out, and Cody simply picked up his dog.
And that's not what, that's not what happened.
Jerry, can you pull that microphone down so that we can hear him? Hi, Cody.
That'll stay, that'll stay with you.
Any questions, Warren?
Was that, was that, was that pretty scary, to see that dog come and running at you? Yeah? Were the two, were the two dogs, were they barking at each other? No? Can you tell, can you tell us what hap, we're really not that scary. Can you tell us what happened? We wanna hear your story. We're, we're here to hear what happened to you. Well, I'm not that scary. The rest of them might. A dog bite, that's right.
Were you outside in your backyard with your dog?
Uh, we're in the front yard.
Were you in your front yard? What's your dog's name?
Shadow.
Shadow. How big is Shadow? Can you show me this way, how big is Shadow?
About like, he goes like right here to my knee.
So, he goes, so he's about, about that big? And did at any time when, when Lacy came over, did, did the two dogs get into a fight? And you stick your hand down to try to get, to, to keep your dog from getting bitten? Okay, so that is what happened? And the dogs were fighting, and, and you bent down? Or did you bend down because you were afraid your dog was gonna get hurt and you picked him up?
I was afraid he was gonna get hurt.
You were afraid he was gonna get hurt, and so you picked him up? And, and when did Lacy bite you on the arm?
Uh, right after I picked the dog up.
Right after you picked Shadow up?
Do you have any more questions? Does anybody have a question for Cody?
Yes, I'm sorry, which-
Cody, thank you. Ms. Williams, I think Ms. Alletta has a question for you.
You're trying to work around the definition of attack. If your son was bit by a dog, whether it was first started by two dogs biting him or not, and the end result is that your son had bite marks on him, you wouldn't classify that as an attack on your son?
No, if the dogs, if my son had, I've taught my children from a very young age not to intervene on a dog's-
That's not the question. The question was-
So, if the dogs were fighting and my son got bit because he tried to break up the fight?
But you wouldn't consider a bite mark on an individual, an attack by that dog on that individual?
If they weren't in a dog fight.
I'm just saying, you're just saying, if a dog bites someone, you're saying that's not an attack on that person?
Yes, in some instances.
Interesting definition.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Holder?
Hey, 225 Happy Trail, Locust Grove, and 350 Victory Lane, Locust Grove, are these the streets in a subdivision?
Yes, and they're, they live right behind us.
In which subdivision?
Uh, Smith Grove subdivision.
Smith Grove, okay. I just want, I want to be sure that we're aware that this is a subdivision.
Yes, it is. Their yard back sometime.
Right off Peekskill Road.
Yes.
Or right on Peekskill Road.
Yes.
Mr. Stany?
Can I ask you a question, ma'am? Do you think the dog was trying to bite you, or you think he was trying to bite the dog?
Um, he was trying to bite the dog.
You think he was trying to bite the dog? Did you ever feel threatened, that dog biting you more after it snapped at you?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess to follow up on that question, Cody, have you played with that, have you played with the dog before? The dog that bit you, have you played with him before?
Uh, played with him before they got a fence in their, in their backyard.
For a long time, we didn't have a fence, and they would play with our dogs on the chain.
Were you ever afraid of the dog?
No.
Mr. Bowman?
I was gonna ask if, are you, are you, are you afraid of the dog, Cody?
Uh, now I am.
Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, ma'am, when you were playing with your dog, did you have your dog on a leash?
Yes.
I'm sorry? You had him on a leash? Okay, so you pretty well had control of your dog, right? What's the other dog? The other dog was not on a leash. The other dog had been let, and let me just kinda, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth. I, I think what you said is somebody opened the door and the dog ran out. So, the other dog was, he just ran out of the house, so. I think it's, you know, Cody's dog, he's walking his dog on a leash, I mean, so he's doing what he's supposed to do with his dog, so.
Mr. Alletta?
The definite, you gave us the definition of a dangerous dog, and what the consequences are as that classification, with the insurance and various other things. I suspect that it's not the same definition or the requirement, same requirements for a potentially dangerous. So, what is, what are the requirements that the owner must go through with potentially dangerous?
With a potentially dangerous dog, there is an enclosure requirement. And the Williams have certainly met that, met their responsibility for a potentially dangerous dog. It must be in an enclosure at all times, and if it is outside of that enclosure, it has to be leashed and muzzled. There is no insurance requirement for a potentially dangerous dog. However, there is a $100 yearly certification fee. The officers go out to inspect the fence, to inspect the enclosures, to, to make sure that the dog is, is being kept in compliance with the classification of potentially dangerous. But as far as the insurance requirement or surety bond requirement for potentially dangerous, there is none.
Mr. Stany?
One other question, ma'am. What kind of dog was this? What is your dog?
She is a Australian Shepherd Siberian Husky mix, oh, sorry. Not very, mid-sized dog.
And how old is your dog?
She is two.
And you're the original owner of the dog?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Anything else, Ms. Williams?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Lowry, anything else you'd like to add? Jerry, is there anything you'd like to add? Alright, with that, we're gonna follow the same procedures we did for the, the case we just heard. And I'll look to the board. We can either vote to uphold the potentially dangerous dog classification. We can overturn that classification, or we can table this and make a decision within 10 days. Again, I ask when you make your motion, that you do so to convene as the Animal Control Board, and to make your motion, and the effective date as November 15th, 2011.
I just want one thing for clarification, if you don't mind. Potentially dangerous, Jerry, if you could come up, I, I've read these all day, actually all afternoon. I got here a couple of hours early, so I read everything in them. But the potentially dangerous is one that might, would bite without provocation and does not require the $100,000 worth of insurance or-
Correct. That the definition of potentially dangerous is any dog that bites unprovoked after March 31st, 1989. And for the restrictions or the requirements to house a potentially dangerous dog is only an enclosure requirement, a leash and muzzle requirement, and, and the reinspection annually. There is no insurance requirement or surety bond requirement.
And they've met the requirements-
Yes, sir, they have.
-for the potentially dangerous dog?
Yes, they have.
And if they walk the dog, it will have to be muzzled? If it's, if they're, if they have it on a leash and they're walking, it would have to be muzzled?
Correct. Along with the potentially dangerous and the dangerous dog, there's required signage that is produced by the state of Georgia that is required to be in the yard of, of a dog owner that has a dog that's classified. And the Williams have certainly complied with that as well.
Is there a court date after this decision?
Yes, there is.
When is that court date?
December the 5th. It's for not having your dog on a restraint, leash law. That was the ticket that was issued that day.
And that's the 5th of December?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, I will look to the board to make a motion of some sort. Whether to uphold, to overturn, or table for up to 10 days for a decision.
I'll make a motion to uphold the findings of the Animal Control, this is for 15th of November.
Okay, and the motion also includes convening as the Animal Control Board?
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to uphold. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? All opposed. Okay, motion carries 3-2 with Bowman, Holder, and Alata voting in favor and Holmes and Stamey in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to planning and zoning. A board decision for a modification request by Community and Southern Bank of Atlanta, Georgia to modify zoning conditions for property located at 224340 and 2609 Metta Brook in Land Lots 79 and 82 of the 6th District. The public hearing for this modification request was held on October 18th, 2011. Our presenter is Stacy Jordan, Planning and Zoning Department, Exhibit Number 5. Now, I'd like to also remind the board that we actually had the public hearing on this and last month. And so we don't have to go back through everything that we did at that time because we, we covered all the bases. But there were a few issues, I believe, Mr. Stamey, that you wanted to get worked out and resolved. We had some bond issues, bridge and road issues, and things that needed to come back before the board for further clarification. So with that being said, I will turn it over to Stacy to address those particular issues that we referenced at the last meeting.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board members. Last month, on October the 18th, this item was tabled because of the issues that you had mentioned. In part, because of the uncertainty regarding the title to the private streets that the applicant wishes to deed to the county. Also, regarding the building materials for the homes and the particular types of amenities that would go in a pocket park that was proposed. If I could direct your attention to your handout resolution, I would, and I would also make note that in the discussion on October the 18th, the applicant had mentioned that regarding Condition Number 3 and the 2,000 square foot minimum heated square footage for the homes, that he intended to develop a larger home size. And so the applicant has proposed to amend Condition Number 3 to state that the minimum heated square feet for the residential dwellings shall be 2,200 square feet for ranch one-story homes and 2,400 square feet for two-story homes. Regarding Condition Number 4, the proposal in your handout states, "All houses shall have front facades consisting of two of the following materials: brick, synthetic stone, stucco, and hardy plank type siding or shakes. The sides shall have a brick or stone water table extending 24 inches from grade on single story homes and 36 inches on two-story homes. The rear facade shall be hardy plank type siding or otherwise consistent with the front facade, and vinyl shall be allowed on porches, trim materials, and soffits." Condition Number 5 has the same wording as the public hearing. Condition Number 8 is a bit different. It says, "All streets shall be public and deeded to Henry County for continued maintenance only after the developer has satisfied all outstanding issues noted by Henry County Department of Transportation as shown in Attachment A." And Attachment A is indeed attached. These were the issues regarding the emergency vehicle access, as well as the issues regarding the public streets. Condition Number 15 states, "A mandatory homeowners association shall be created with covenants to maintain the amenities consisting of a poolhouse, nitro trail, and gazebos, and to protect the open space areas during, including the flood plain. The installation of amenities shall be completed on or before 18 months from the date the final plat is recorded. A pocket park shall be developed in replacement of some of the lots in the planned Nevis Way cul-de-sac as shown in the attached drawing named Pocket Park for Annaboo Community dated November 10th, 2011." This is Attachment B in your handout. Said Pocket Park shall be designed to include complete landscaping, benches, and a recreational feature to be approved by planning staff. Condition 16, as before, is requested to be deleted in its entirety. And also, as before, the associated variance, VR 0529, is requested to be stricken and made of no consequence. Planning staff makes no recommendation, but we have no objection.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Jordan? If not, the applicant is here. If you'd like to come forward, is there anything that you'd like to add?
Yes, ma'am, there's a few things. My name is Neil Cobal, 1371 Dogwood Drive in Conyers. First of all, Madam Chair, thank you for extending me this time to redo the agenda here for my tardiness. I apologize about that. I was in a, all the lanes were closed where I was at, a pedestrian was hit. So, thank you guys for, for allowing me to do that. I would just like to point out that we did go through the list of items that were brought up at, by the Department of Public Works with Terry McMichael and others. And we have agreed to address all those items. One item that we weren't able to address prior to tonight's meeting was, was making, do the, the title check, which is we're going to have to require a survey being done. But that is, we've agreed to do that as a condition of getting the final, prior to the final plat being recorded, just to make sure there were no additional liens or anything else like that. Our initial title check, we did find that, that the foreclosure wiped out any existing liens that were there, so we're, we're able to confirm that as well. And we've agreed to do the maintenance items that were on the bridge as well. And I brought a, a couple of ideas on the house plans. I didn't know if you guys would be interested in seeing those, the elevations, or that'd be okay to show those, Steve? One of the plans that, excuse me, that we had drawn up, which is one alternative, is the, uh, that's kind of hard to see, but what we have is this is a, this is a three-car garage. This would be a two-story house that we've bumped up to be over the, the 2,400 square foot proposal that we're making above the 2,000. This has, uh, this is all, shown is all brick right here with the three-car garage with some cedar shake. That is, uh, it would be a hardy type shake. That, that's one of the ideas that, that we'd like to present to you guys for consideration. In addition, beyond just the exterior of the house, I also had the opportunity to meet with Commissioner Stamey and explain to him that, you know, we're not trying to strip down these houses or anything along those lines. They have granite countertops, they're going to have smooth finished ceilings, they're going to have what we call our presidential trim in the homes, which is the highest trim package that we do, which just includes box trim on the, like a judge's panel going up the stairs, a lot of crown on the first floor of the house. We'll have tile backsplash. So, these, these, what we're trying to accomplish here is not just a, a stripped-down house by taking out the three sides of brick, but we are trying to achieve some streetscape. And we're also trying to achieve something that, that people can afford to buy these days with the mortgage restraints and also the amount of foreclosures and what that's doing to, to drive down the price of the homes. And a second rendering that I'd just like to, to show you is a, what the, an additional option that was within the requirements of what we're asking for. This is a, more of a, this is a ranch plan that would be offered out there. This would be a minimum of 2,200 square feet, as we have it proposed right now, above the original 2,000. And this plan is just an idea. It's not anything that, that we are saying we have to have, other than the mix, the use of materials, we, we could play with a little bit. But this shows, again, some tapered columns, some brick tapered columns on the bottom, brick across, across the main portion of the front, some cedar shakes, and then some battening board siding. All of these, both of these ideas, these conceptual ideas, along with the 24-inch brick water table or stone water table, or a 36-inch water table for the two-story, the ability to do this over, you know, 211 homes, you know, would, would break up the streetscape significantly and give the project some better longevity than just building a similar brick house for all 211 lots. And I'd like to also reiterate that we are asking for the density to be reduced from 233 to 211 homes. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Ms. Holder?
Condition 19. Would you consider putting that money into escrow prior to, couldn't, maybe not, the stipulations could be put in, the way it wouldn't be drawn down until 15 days prior to the final plat? So many times, and the reason I say this, these contributions get overlooked. And when it comes time to draw on that, it may be three years, four years down the road or whatever build-out is, and people somehow forget that there's been a commitment made.
Yes, sir.
So, my question is, would you be willing to escrow that money into the county escrow account?
Yes, sir. We would be willing to do that at the, when we take title to the property. We would be willing to make that a condition, that that remaining fund, some of this has been posted and we would, we would, we would, I think it's $19,000 that's left, and we would be willing to put that in escrow at the time that we're able to close on the property.
Ms. Molly, can you make that adjustment to that?
Uh, yes, we'll put it in the, into a restricted account. We'll add that as a condition of zoning. And that money shall be placed into a restricted account maintained by the county.
Okay, we can adjust-
We've done that before, and we can, um, have a, we have an agreement, we can-
We could do a letter of credit, too, that's a cash letter of credit. You guys have a form for that already, but either way, you prefer.
I'll defer to the finance director on that, that issue.
It would just be easier for the deposit to be made into the escrow account for accountability purposes. Okay.
Mr. Bowman?
This, actually, is questions for Terry. We, uh, we had conversation about this, and, and I don't remember all that we talked about, but it had something to do with the fact that utilities and other things were already in. Are you satisfied with what's happening here, that you're going to be, that we're going to be in the front of the land instead of the back of the land on the streets as far as the utilities and the right-of-way?
I don't think he can accomplish that tonight. The way it's wrote, it's a condition before we sign off. The, right now, what exists is utilities have their own easements out there. If we were granted, I think, and I'm certainly not practicing law here, but I think if we were granted the right-of-way now, those easements were in place first, so they would have priority. What we're asking for is the reverse of that, that we have, we would be first in line or first title on it, and those easements would come after us. So, as it is, I think if we were granted the right-of-way, if I was out there, let's say on a gas line easement, and I was wanting to do something, they would have priority over me. They could control what I would be doing on that piece of property instead of me having control. I don't think they have that tonight, but I think they understand they have to make that good before we'll sign off.
I guess I'm, I'm concerned, too, on follow-up. What does it mean, ensuring proper asset, access? Terry, do you mean unencumbered by any other entity? Is that what you mean by proper access?
You're talking about on the right-of-way?
On this, on your condition on Attachment A.
Yeah, it means unencumbered. There's no liens, leases, anything that somebody could come back and attach to that right-of-way. We want it basically a clean title on that property.
I think we need to add that language in, Madam Chairman.
And I'm looking at Attachment A. Do you think this warrants a development agreement because of all the issues that are going to be attached to this?
We certainly can do that, yes.
Okay, and I think you can clear a lot of those issues up by, by having that in place.
Crime has had development agreement with that part?
Resolution?
I know there was concern that, from Terry, when I spoke to him earlier, about not being first in line on that, anything that's in the right-of-way. I just wanted to be sure that, you know, that we can make that happen before I go much further with this. You know, I don't, I don't want to be out there and be in the back of the land, so.
One of Commissioner Stamey's concerns is kind of in that same line. There's a part of this property, I don't believe that belongs to the property, but they have to make sure they got clean title, get to it. And that's in that bridge area, and that's included in this, to make sure we have all of that right-of-way that connects up to that piece of property and that title is clean as well. That's where the bridge is located.
Mr. Alata?
I may be reading this incorrectly, so I apologize, but if I read this correctly, we're going to take maintenance responsibility after all the additions in Attachment A takes place, which is before the first house. If this is all taken care of before the first house is even constructed?
They'll have to bond it.
Yeah.
They'll have to go through a three-year bond, just like any other development normally would. When they final plat it, they'll have to place a maintenance bond for three years, and any maintenance that's required during that time period, they'll do that. After that bond's over, we'll certainly take over maintenance.
If I could, did the county attorney, police, read number eight and tell me if that's what that says?
It does not say that. However, in the final plat review process, that is a condition of satisfying those, that requirement at that time. I don't know that we put in these resolutions, resulting resolutions, the bonding requirements, because they're going to require it before they final plat it. It's just a condition before the county accepts the roads.
Well, according to what I'm reading, again, not debating it, but yes, I am, but it's, it says we will be responsible after it's deeded to us, after the Item A, Attachment A is taken care of, and nowhere in Attachment A.
Well, we can make it-
Do I see that this is, this, this can be done, and if Item A can be done, Attachment A can be done before the first house is built, and here comes a bunch of construction trucks and whatever tearing up the roads for the 211 houses that are going to be built, we're responsible, the way I read this, for the maintenance during that time? Now, if there's a three-year bond, I would prefer to have it so listed in Attachment A somewhere that says for three years of whatever period of time. My only concern there is, to the extent at the end of three years, there's only been 15 houses built, you know, or half the houses, and we're going to continue, we're going to take it over, and still, construction trucks are going to be going over those roads after three years of not tearing them up yet, but getting them loose. And then we're responsible at that time while continued construction goes on. We're going to be repairing these roads after that. We're going to be repairing these roads after that.
That is a concern that has happened recently, you know, where there is cases, exactly what you're describing, has happened, where the bond has expired, the subdivision is nowhere built out, likely that when they do come back in, there could be some problems show up. So I would think if that's something that the board wants to add, some.
Well, that's why, you and I were at a HOA meeting where that did come up specifically, which is why from limited experience on this board, I've already seen that, heard that, and that's why I'm raising the issue, because again, we're in some pretty tight times, and you do, I wish you all the best of luck, as said last time, and hope you sell 211 of these in two years. But the odds of that today is probably a little bit slim, but nonetheless, I'm not going to project that. But my concern is this project could go on quite long and beyond that three years, as Terry just mentioned. So that's something I just am a little bit concerned of as far as the length of the bond.
Right. One thing I'd like to also point out that I discussed with Commissioner Stamey is that we were plating about 50 lots at a time, and we'll provide a bond for each phase. So all 211 lots won't be bonded immediately. They'll be bonded as we progress with construction, which will extend the amount of the bond period.
Then the interest rate should be of a different bond if you would, because I understand that they're being platted and work done.
Correct.
But that interest is going to have that going for each of the 50 you plated.
Yes, sir.
So that bond, in my opinion, is one that, maybe is the one that needs to be extended beyond three years.
There'll be one that we can describe as shown here. We've done this before, where this would just be, this section here would be, and this section here would be part of the bond. We'll start from the back, and then we'll bond this. We'll continue to have this section and this section included, the travel lanes back to the place that we're building.
Well, I know in our subdivision, the roads are not completed. Once the development was been completed, then the developer was going to come back and complete the last topping of the road, which we in our homeowner's association have just inherited the cost of because the developer went bankrupt.
Right.
So I'm a little bit touchy on the subject for the reasons I just described, and the costs that we've been stuck with in our homeowners. So I'm not condemning you for it, I'm just saying being cautious for the county as well.
One thing that this economy has happened that's in y'all's favor and other municipalities' favors is that we cannot get bonds anymore. We have to go to our bank and put up the cash bonds, and a lot of the people are left with these expired bonds or bonds that people that went out of business, the bonding companies did. So now we're having to put up the collateral on these new projects that are backed by a cash letter of credits with the bank.
Mr. Bowman?
One more question. The previous developer, did he bring it all the way up to the bottom of the gutter? Or do you hold it down an inch and a half for topping later on? Do you know?
He, the topping course is complete there.
Oh, they've already put the topping course?
It's already to the top of the, bottom of the top of the gutter, however you look at it.
Commissioner, there's only one layer of asphalt.
There's six inches, there's a two-inch lift of asphalt. There's not but one lift of asphalt.
Which that was according to the development standard.
At the time?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
That too could be addressed in a development agreement. The bonding issue could be spelled out.
The bonding, as well as the timing and the manner of the public acceptance of the roads, can be addressed in the, and will be addressed in the development agreement.
In addressing Commissioner Alata's question, I think we can bond the route. If he does initial 50 lots and then runs over that to the next 50 behind it, we can make him bond the entire route that he's running through, and that would be part of this, we could make that part of the agreement.
That's typical.
Mr. Stamey?
You told me this was like probably a four to five-year project anyway, right?
Yes.
So we would run into a renewal situation with this project anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And David, I know you're the one that actually went out and did the visual on this property, correct?
I did.
You did? I thought David went, I'm sorry to report. Okay, I'm sorry to drag you into it, but is everything that you saw incorporated in the attached A?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We just need to add number 15 to include, I mean, number 20 to include the development agreement between the two parties to be established? And one other thing, on the money, the, there's $19,000 and some change over on this. Where is the 15, I mean, the 5,500? Where is it at? It's not a district one.
You missed that one.
Oh, I didn't miss that.
No, I just, where is that money? I mean, where do we put that, where do we put that money at?
I'm assuming it's in a deferred revenue account. I'm not aware.
Because we had to collect it because we were doing this first phase, remember?
Yeah, we got the, we received the check from the original developer, and we delivered that check to finance.
Okay. And it's in a deferred revenue account for use if it ever comes.
And he'll do the same thing with the other 19, correct? Okay. All right.
Any other questions from the board?
If not, I know that we did have a public hearing on this at the last evening meeting last month, but I think it's always appropriate to ask for public comment. So is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? All right? If not, if there's no further questions from the board, Mr. Stamey, this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
You incorporated the number 20, correct?
Yeah, well, 21, or either we can amend.
We can just amend that and add that to the existing 19.
Okay.
Yeah, just change that figure to 19. I saw that earlier, 25 wasn't right. That needed to be 19. I don't know the exact number, 19. Do you have the real number with you, 19?
I do, I'd have to dig through it, but I'm.
Is it like 19-2, something like that?
Real close to that, but it's 19, some change.
Well, we can just say less the amount already paid by the applicant or the property owner to account for that.
If that's the case, then well, I'd like to make a motion with approval with the 20 conditions.
And we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Stamey for approval with the 20 conditions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman and Board. Thank you.
Moving on to county manager, we have a resolution requesting authorization to adopt fees for non-county residents of Henry County senior centers. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, county manager. That's handout number one.
Good, Madam Chair and Board. Over the last couple of years, we have had off and on a discussion regarding out-of-county fees for our, for the use of our senior centers. Mostly, they have centered around our budget discussions. But recently, those discussions have coalesced, I think, into a consensus on the staff and the board's part, and that is why we have before you a resolution establishing a new set of fees for out-of-county residents utilizing our senior centers. And we would go from the current fee of $25 to, for this, for July 1, 2011, to June 30, 2012, to $75, which is a $50 increase, and that could be, would be paid 1,250 by the end of the year, and another 3,750 by the end of June of 2012. And then effective July 1, 2012, the annual non-resident fee will be $150, due and payable in one lump sum on or before June 30 of the preceding year. So that is in front of you as, in the form of a resolution for your approval.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Holder?
I've got one. Butch, what would happen, and we're going to say, I don't know how many people we're talking about, it makes no difference, but what if I had already paid my dues that would due June, July 1, 2011? When that day came, I'd already paid my 2011 dues. Does that mean I still got to come back and ante up again, or have my dues been paid?
It would mean that there would be, the fee is set at $75 per year.
That's not my point, that's not my question. You have already charged me $25, I believe it is, for a registration fee as a non-resident for the year 2011, starting, so you're going to kick me out because I've already paid my dues, and I still got to pony up that other money?
I think that's why the, why the payment schedule has been put in there. Where there would be an additional 1,250 in this calendar year, and then the follow-up of 3,750 over the course of the next six months.
I mean, I can re, I understand that, but I, it's almost like having a membership and then you're raising it during the year, and during the year that they have already taken your money and you thought you paid your dues for the year.
When does the $25 start to affect? Excuse me, when did the $25 fee go into effect initially?
Several years ago.
Does any other board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have a comment.
Mr. Holmes?
I'm very uncomfortable with increasing the fee from $25 to $150 annually. That's a 600% increase on seniors who are pretty much on fixed incomes, who already struggle in this particular economy to pay for food, to pay for medications. And, you know, I think, I think it's something that's totally wrong. I don't know if the board is going to take action in voting on this. I do think that we can, you know, there is room to increase the fee, but in terms of pricing, seniors who have been participating in these seniors, in these centers for years, who are volunteers, who are actually part of the community, I just don't think it's the right thing to do.
So we have checked with our surrounding neighboring counties, and that $150 fee is very competitive, if not low.
I can understand that, but if you look at the other counties, they have more amenities. If you take Hidden Valley for example, many of those seniors only spend about an hour a day, hour to two hours a day, they come, they socialize for about an hour, then they go home. Also, in our particular county, in our particular part of the county, many subdivisions sit on both Henry County as well as Clayton County, Henry County and DeKalb County. So those people are a part of the community. And, you know, basically, I think if we're increasing the fee that much, we're sending a message to those folks saying, we don't want your kind here. And I just want the board to reconsider that $150 charge. I think it's entirely too high. I would be prepared to support something a lot, a lot lower than the $150.
Sure.
Mr. Bowman?
Yes, Butch, I believe that this is for citizens that actually live in Henry County, don't have to pay these fees. These are for citizens that actually live outside of Henry County. I think when the numbers, and I'm going to go on public record with this, that the numbers at the Hidden Valley is somewhere in the neighborhood of an average of 100, and there's potential for 46 out-of-county seniors that come in. I realize that Clayton County has more in the line of things for those seniors to do, but they charge them $180 a year. So, I mean, at the end of the day, those senior centers, senior centers were built for Henry County citizens. There are senior centers such as Rockdale County that does not allow anybody to come in that's out of county. And I feel like that, I understand who Commissioner Holder is, and I agree, I think we should, maybe we should take a look at how we structured that initial, maybe we should just say, okay, it'll start the next year at the $75. But the $150 is not too much when it's $180 in Clayton County. And I think when you take a look, we have, we have, let's see, one, two, three, we've got three senior centers, and, you know, Fayette County has one, and Rockdale may have one or two. I don't know how many DeKalbs got. But these centers were built by the taxpayers who own property in Henry County, not by the people that live in DeKalb, and not by the people that live in Clayton. They may be a community, but they're not the taxpayer. This million dollars a year that's spent on each one of these centers is, that money comes out of the general fund. That money comes from the taxpayer who lives in Henry County, not the taxpayer who lives in DeKalb County paying DeKalb County taxes. I do not believe that it's excessive, and I do not believe it's Henry County's place and their citizens' place to take care of the others. They should at least pay that. Now, we'll say one other issue. They eat at our senior, at our center for like $3.50 a meal. I think it's $6.00 a meal at Clayton. So, I mean, you know, it's a lot cheaper to come, they'll save more money just by what they eat over here, to more than pay for what they're talking about doing. So, I mean, I'm in full agreement with the $150. I do understand Commissioner Holder's point there, that you have already paid. I don't, I don't think, and we didn't talk about the funding, how we were going to do it, you know, when we talked about it, and I think, you know, I don't, I don't think anybody likes something retroactive. I mean, oh, by the way, you got to go back and do it. I would have no issues at all with putting that off until the, until the start of a new year, and then, and then phase it in and do a 75, and then the following year, do the 150. That gives them, that gives people time to do it. Wouldn't have any problems with that at all. But I do have a problem when there's 100 average that show up and a potential for 46 out-of-county people using up those facilities that actually belong to and are paid for by the Henry County taxpayers.
I guess my next question is, why are we singling out senior services? I mean, there are a number of other divisions in which we can increase price, increase the price for out-of-county visitors, but, you know, we haven't decided to do that. Parks and Rec, library, as well as other departments. So why won't we just take a comprehensive look at fees across the board and then, and then come back to the table then?
I know that in the past, we have looked at recreation department fees, and they are considerably higher than the $25. But that is, that's, as I said, the two main occasions where these, this issue has come up, of all fees, have been the last two budget discussions.
Yeah, but I think we, I think we started to taking a look at the, we took a look at the recreation fees at the beginning of the year, but that never made it in front of the board. We started taking a look at raising or targeting the senior services area just a couple of weeks ago, and that's in front of the board already, and we're looking at a 600% increase. I don't think that's fair.
Onto the library, do you want to comment? There are no fees associated with the library. The library is part of the Pines Network, which encompasses several different counties, so there's shared resources. You can take your card and you can access other libraries with that card, so it goes across county lines. The rec fees, I'm not sure what those are. They probably need to be looked at, but I know that each season, if you enroll for softball in the spring, you will pay an out-of-county fee if you're not a county resident, and then if you play again in the fall, you will play, you will pay another out-of-county fee for that season. So it's not for the whole year, it's for every sport that you choose to participate in, that fee is tacked on.
And we do look at those, and those have been adjusted.
And this particular issue has come to the board because, primarily because we've had some concerns shared by some citizens from the north end of the county who have tried, well, I guess they wanted to use the Clayton County facilities, and they were going to be charged $180, and yet it's not reciprocal between Clayton and Henry County. It's, you know, they're, the Clayton County residents were using our centers at no cost, while if our citizens wanted to utilize Clayton County, there would be a $180 a year cost. So just trying to equalize that. Mr. Stamey?
Yes, Mr. Bowman, your comments were, what you were saying was, keep it like it is for this year, because we're already under contract, and in 2012, go to 75, and in 2013, go and increase again, correct?
I've never really got into the actual, you know, the plan as far as what, you know, when they were going to pay it. And I'm not particularly one that thinks that you should, somebody's already paid for this year and then go back and retroactively say, you know, because we're talking about going back to June, you know, go back and say, oh, by the way, you owe this much more. I agree with Commissioner Holder. I don't think that's right. But I do think that the first of the next year, whenever our budget year, whichever, whichever one we need to do, it needs to be $75, and then the next year be the 150. That gives them some opportunity there, but I'm, you know, I'm open, I'm open to suggestions. I'm the one that got the complaints, and so, and, you know, I want to really go on record as saying, I didn't get like 100 complaints. You know, I got, you know, I got. You know, I got, you know, I got eight or 10, but I feel like eight or 10's too many when I look at the differences in what was going on.
I know, I know of one complaint, I don't know of eight or 10, but there was one complaint.
Well, I'm talking about District 4, I doubt District 4 people are gonna give you a call, Commissioner Holder.
Well, District 5 gave you a call, and District in the, uh, Hidden Valley, uh, senior center lies in District 5.
Uh, it's a Henry County Senior Center. Uh, it's a Henry County paid for by the citizens of Henry County. It don't belong to District 5. It's a Henry County Senior Center. And, uh, you know, just to, just, hey, you know, you wanna start it, we can get into it, but I mean, the issue is, very plainly, you want people to come from all over the county to be able to share it, and I don't think it's right because they're not paying anything for it.
600% is way too high.
Well, one thing about having the discussion now as far as setting the fees in place, this gives seniors ample time between now and July 1st if that, if the board decides to do that, to, to make arrangements to either, um, participate in Henry County or to go back to their respective counties, so it does give them options by making a decision now. Mr. Alletta?
I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about senior centers in District 2, but I'll hold that comment for just a minute and address some of the things that were said. As to the 600% being unfair, I do agree it's unfair, but it's been unfair for many, many years to the Henry County citizens that the charges were not equi- equal to what was being charged our citizens going to the other counties. So, the inequ- the inequity is not with our charges that we're now trying to bring up to almost the levels that DeKalb and Clayton are, which I believe are 180 bucks and 225 bucks. So, this is less than still, less than 150 is still less than those charges that they've had in place for our people living on their borders that wanna go over to their senior center. The other is that just because somebody lives in the proximity or across the line in a county, uh, does not make them part of our community as taxpayers, which is how these two and a half million dollar centers were built and the million dollars that we fund each year for them is being paid. It's paid by the property taxes and sales taxes collected in this county, which these citizens in this county pay. So, to sit here and say it's unfair, um, I, as I said, unfairness is, is quite frankly undersight. I don't have a problem waiting and honoring a contract that's been set in place, but I do have a problem continuing to keep the inequity past 2012, July of 2012 and, and ramping it up when we're sitting here saying our citizens wanting to go to their place have gotta pay more than $150 to go there. Um, so, in my opinion, um, it needs to be done July 1st of next year. They've got the time, as the chairman said, to, uh, figure out if they wanna be here over there. It's not like we're shutting them out of a, a senior center, they can go to their own respective county senior centers and enjoy them where they pay their taxes, or maybe they should tell Clayton, DeKalb, they wanna portion their taxes to pay the $150 to use our senior centers. And, uh, as, as Commissioner Bowman mentioned, if someone is using our center approximately five times, uh, a month, I think they will get their money back from the savings they have in the meals. And again, it's five times a month, it's not five times a year. So, if they're coming over to use it and they like it that much, the savings at almost $3.00 a meal, $15 times 12 is $180 of savings. So, again, fair or unfair, they chose to come here because of the $25 rate. I don't consider them, quote, "part of our community," community means who's paying the taxes on these and that's our citizens. And I guess, as I said, I guess my thoughts will just say that, um, I just think it's quite a large inequity that just because somebody lives on the border of our county and can drive a mile to go to a senior center, uh, that gives them a privilege to spend much less when somebody's paying for it, when I've got citizens west of I-75 that do not have that same privilege of, uh, being a mile away from a senior center and have been promised one for many, many years and have yet to see it. So, I don't have any compassion at this point, if you would, if you wanna put it that way, um, when the citizens of District 2 have not gotten their promise of a senior center closer to the proximity where they live, um, and we should sit here and make it a freebie, if you would, for somebody to come in and at the same time, uh, our citizens be penalized, if you would, 'cause they live here on the borders of those counties wanting to use their senior centers. That's it.
Any further comments or questions from the board? Mr. Holder?
Ms. Bailey, when are the dues due? Is it the calendar year or the fiscal year?
Well, we assume it's the fiscal year because we assessed those fees for the first time in July of this year.
Okay.
When we started the new budget, so I would assume a year out would go with, with the fiscal year.
Okay, I, I just wanna make some comments and certainly we'll debate the issue to the end. There is not one senior center in this county that was built with general fund money, it's all sploshed. Now, the operations, the MNO is definitely taxpayer-funded. And, uh, I know we heard a comment about a free ride. Well, ladies and gentlemen, we talk about free rides, how many times do the citizens of Henry County go to Grady Hospital for trauma care and the citizens of DeKalb and Fulton County are supporting Grady Hospital? Henry County should be able to step to the plate. We should be assessed a portion of what we use at Grady Hospital. So, I'm just reversing the roles. You look funny and you, and look in shock. Our splosh has funded every senior center as far as the bricks and mortar, the capital building of these centers. And in our own projections, we say that 40 to 50% of the splosh is collected by people from outside Henry County. Yeah, if, if I'm wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong, but is that not somebody that's been here? Is that not what the projections show? So, my point is, to say that all of this is the burden of every Henry County citizen, the citizens of Henry County didn't build these centers in their entirety, they do fund them with, with, with the... I think, though, if you go back, Commissioner Holder, and take a look at that, I believe that the construction on cost, cost on them has far been outweighed by the maintenance and upkeep and keeping them up that taxpayers have paid for. I don't agree with that. You, no, it doesn't... What is, how much is the budget on? The MNO is not $3 million a year or whatever to, to run the senior center.
Mr. Alletta?
No, we, we don't have MNO, $3 million a year.
What is, what is?
It runs about $1 million a year between the two centers.
Between the two centers? We've got a third center now, so that's a half a million dollars a year. How long, when was the one built in, uh, in, when was Heritage built? I mean, not Heritage, uh, Hidden Valley?
What year?
It was around 2000.
2003, 2002.
Okay, so 2003, that's eight years, that's about, what is that at, $500,000 a year? I think it's $4 million. They paid more money since it was built than the taxpayers had paid that money. And, and I would venture to say that the DeKalb County people hadn't came over here and spent all their tax money doing this. I believe a whole lot of it has been people passing through the county, coming from Florida and other places and stopping down at Tangemall and all these other places. You can't define the fact that they came in. And I'll tell you something else, uh, you just don't walk into Grady and get a whole lot of help. A lot of our people that go to Grady have insurance and they get, and they pay for that. I don't think everybody that goes to Grady from Henry County, and I doubt there's that many, but I don't believe everybody goes to, to Grady from Henry County goes on the free. But who pays for the maintenance and the operation of Grady Hospital? It's not the people of Henry County. They pay for their insurance. When that person goes in there, their insurance is paid for. Why has it been such a deficit and such a shortfall in, in Grady? Because it's been run pretty sad. It's been run pretty sad. The management of it's been terrible, that's why it is. Okay, that, that very well could be true, but the point is, the taxpayers of, of those two counties are the ones that had to fund it, whether it was mismanagement or not. And maybe our senior centers are mismanaged, you know, who's, who's to say? All I'm saying is that for the last eight years, every how long it's been, that's $4 million, that's more than it cost to build it and the taxpayers not only paying for it now, but will be paying for it as long as it's there. So, the construction part's the easy part, we've all said that before. The building is the easy part, you get the splosh money, you go build. That's the easy, it's funded them, that's why we talked about it. Is that not, is that not?
That's not a senior center in District 2 because it's not the building, it's the MNO.
Trouble with recreation, with libraries? I don't have any problem with recreation. Public safety can be thrown in there too. Police departments are not here to make money. Fire department's not here to make money. The recreation's not. But, but you're talking about what the real cost of operating these centers is, what's it cost to operate recreation? All the parks in this county? What does it cost to operate the PD, the fire department, all these departments? It's not a money-making issue. I don't see the police department or the fire department going into Rockdale County and Clayton County and Fulton County and all these other places and, and, and doing that. I wouldn't say that. There are agreements with, that we do go into other counties and other counties come in here. What's your latest agreement? I'm sure there is, but it's not as a regular occurrence.
Mr. Alletta?
I appreciate your passion, Mr. Bowman, but I do believe that Clayton, DeKalb do not share your feelings since they have chosen long before us to add 180 to $225 fee for our residents using theirs. So, I don't see where we wanna be earlier than thou, not following suit with them because we may have a different philosophy allowing their people to come here and use our rec centers for free when they don't share the same philosophy that there's, our sales tax dollars may be spending stuff in their, their county as well.
Not to mention that we don't go in their counties and spend any of our money. I mean, and they don't, they got splosh programs just like we got. All of a sudden, we, we're the big bad guys now because we wanna make the playing field level and that just don't make any sense to me. And, and I don't know, I mean, I, I, I mean, obviously, you know, the, just hasn't been that much said about it, but... Well, some of the amenities at Clayton and Rockdale, and, and I, I know Rockdale showed that, that Henry County residents, they don't accept any out-of-county residents. I know some ladies from McDonough that had gone to Cogners for years to swim in the pool. And the, the point I'm making is the amenities that some of these others have, the other counties have, is much more costly amenity than what we have as far as activities and eating and what have you. When we get to, when we make the step, and we've tried it before with the city of McDonough, to partner with a pool, a senior pool, and we still haven't made that happen. So, the seniors in this county do not have a pool.
Well, I think at the end of the day too, we gotta look at it from a practical standpoint. These seniors who do not live in Henry County have an option. They have a county they can go to and I think Clayton County's fee for their in-county residents is $12 a year or a dollar a month. So, they do have another place to go. It's not as if we're saying, "Okay, you never, you can't, you have nowhere else to go if you can't pay to come to Henry County." They do have other options and have amenities in their own community. So, we're, we're, we're talking about Henry County facilities and out-of-county residents and how we need to, um, look at equity between what all the other counties are doing and, and follow similar suit. I don't think it's gonna be a moneymaker even at 100, 150 a year, it's not gonna be a moneymaker.
I think it costs over $11 to prepare a meal that we charge $3.50 for.
Exactly.
So, I mean...
It's not, it's not a moneymaker, in time 46 people, that's not gonna make or break anything, but it's just an equity issue.
It is, I mean, we, we provide an excellent service.
We do.
Every one of you made good, solid points. There are a lot of facets to this discussion and, and I can, I, I can tell you, um, we are, myself, Ms. Bailey, Ms. Craig and, and the staff are, are ready to institute, um, any, any fee that you put in place and, uh, and administer it as, as fairly and equitably as possible.
Mr. Alletta?
Comment was made, uh, Andrew, was, is, is our cost of a meal $11, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, sir, that is the total cost of the meal.
So, by encouraging people with a low fee to come here, to eat here, we're incurring more losses by encouraging people to come here at the same time. So, so to the extent 20 people come here, eat here, one day or 30 days or whatever per month, each time they do, in saving $3.00 not going to their own respective county, we are at a loss that our citizens are gonna have to observe out of our main, out of our gen- uh, general funds on top of the cost of the million dollars of maintaining.
There is some loss there, there, there are other factors, some of that is reimbursable through funding sources, but, um, some of it is a loss to the county, or at the expense...
Even if it's half of that, still, we're, we're encouraging losing money by encouraging people to come here at a favorable rate over their own county. Make some sense to me?
Well, and we're not, I don't believe, um, based on the conversation with Susan Craig, that the out-of-county citizens, uh, the out-of-county citizens from Clayton and DeKalb, those are not reimbursable. No, our, our citizens are reimbursables, but those cannot be counted for reimbursement.
So, there's a pure loss at that point, like I said, per person, so, but we're subsidizing their $3.00, five meals a month, $15, $180 a year, savings of them coming to our place for $25 a year to, or $150 if it's even that, versus in, in us losing...
$8.
$8 a meal times those meals are $40 a month or $480 a year by encouraging them to come here. In business, I call that a lost leader, but one that I'm not so sure that I, I'd keep in my business.
Mr. Stamey?
Answer a question. Uh, Butch, last year we imposed a new fee, right, on this?
$25.
Last year, was the first year we charged at $25, right?
This July, just like... This fiscal year, July 1st of 2011.
I'm just trying to think back, did we have a resolution before us to approve those $25?
No, sir, I think that was part of the discussion in the budget, process, during the budget process, and I think Ms. Craig just assessed those fees based on the budget discussion. I never saw anything come through the board.
Okay, with that same thought, if we don't take any action with this tonight, can this still be handled internally on the new budget in 2012?
If that's the direction given during the...
'Cause I'm really confused why we even, I'm seeing this, really, I mean, I know we talked about it, but it was, it's something that we didn't really need a resolution tonight to vote on, correct?
Well, based on some of the discussions with some of the board members, they wanted to do a retroactive correction to those fees, that's why you see a resolution tonight.
That's correct.
But if we do know action, we can handle this on a new budget in 2012 and, I guess, first quarter, second quarter, 12, correct?
If that's, if that's the board's desire, because ultimately you all finalize a budget anyway.
Uh, I think that if you go back to the, um, the conversation we had about allowing seniors an opportunity to know in advance that they are going to have fees on July 1, it's going to be this amount of money, it gives them ample time if they are out of county to make provisions for those fees.
I think after these discussions tonight, they're gonna know there's some fees increases coming.
But to what degree?
I would think if you vote on the resolution and accepting it, would give them that opportunity to understand that. A non-vote to them may mean there could be differences of opinions on the board members to where it may or may not pass, so they can prepare for it, but at the same time, a resolution saying, "This is what we're going to do," that is what they have before them to understand and get prepared for next year. So, the resolution, I think, is a good idea to, to put some definition to it now. Discussion's probably not gonna change a whole bunch more, uh, in June or May or whenever we, we propose the next budget.
Mr. Bowman?
Well, I personally think we should vote on it. I, I think we should go ahead and do it because what happens, it, it goes ahead and sets it and we're, you know, then, then, then we don't have to get into this drawn out, another drawn out discussion about it. But I'd have one more question in this, I'm, I'm not trying to picket anything, but in, in the million dollars for the two, is the grass cutting and the maintenance by our maintenance people, is that calculated in that at all?
No, sir.
So, you know, the upkeep that we do and, and the maintenance guys that we send over to redo, to take care of the air conditioning units and the paint and the fixing up and all that, that's not actually covered, so it's actually more than a half a million dollars. I just thought I'd make that, that little comment. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I'd like to know how much it cost, if we're gonna start doing that, how much it costs to cut each park, how much it costs to cut the courthouse, so we can't single a senior center out. And I'll, I'll, my final comment is, I would like to see us adopt this resolution effective in rewriting it to say that this is effective, um, July the 1st, 2012, and then effective, going to 75 and then 2013 would be at the 150.
Do you wanna make that in the form of a motion?
I will do it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Okay, I'll call one more time, is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second, I will entertain a subsequent motion. Mr. Alletta?
I'll make the motion that, uh, exclude item number one and the one that's been presented and, uh, number two become number one and that fee will be effective, uh, July 2012 at $150.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, effective July 1st, 2012. All right, we have a motion on the floor effective July first, 2012. The annual non-resident fee be a hundred and fifty dollars? And do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor of that motion? All opposed? Okay, motion fails with Aletta and Bowman in favor, Holmes, Stamey, and Holder in opposition. Is there a subsequent motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put the same motion back up, uh, structured the same way it was presented the first time that the seventy-five dollar, uh, rate would be imposed on June the thirtieth of 2012, and that that would go to a hundred and fifty dollars on July the first of 2013.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Madam Chair, is that the same motion that failed initially?
Yeah.
I think you can bring that back up.
Didn't you adjust the second number?
No, I adjusted anything.
That motion has failed.
It's failed, and you have another one to fail.
Yes, sir.
I can't bring them back, same motion back?
No, sir, unless you're going to modify and have some modification to it.
Can another commissioner submit that same motion? I think we've done that before.
Okay, then, uh, what, the adjustment that needs to be made, can it be the, simply the date? Could be anything, it would be.
You can bring up, you can make a different motion, sir, yes.
Ma'am?
You can, you can make a different motion.
Okay, then, let's see how we can do this. Effective for the, uh, budget year of 2011, twenty, I mean, 2012, 2013, the fee would be seventy-five dollars per person for out-of-county residents. And I won't even put a 2013 date in it, and it is not the same motion, right?
Okay, he's striking the 2013.
Yeah, for one year, at seventy-five dollars.
Effective 2012.
Effective when the 2012, 2013 budget goes into effect.
This July one.
So, I'll second that motion.
Which is July one.
Okay, we have a second by Mr. Stamey. Does everybody understand the motion on the floor? And I think what Mr. Holder's saying is then we can come back and adjust that to the hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
But he's leaving it out of this resolution.
I got to change your motion.
I think you're saying that it's going to go to one fifty in thirteen now.
Well, he can come back and make that motion at another time.
His first motion was one twenty-five, right? No, it was one fifty. No, it's exactly this, but I can't bring it back up.
Got you.
Can't bring the same motion back up again, I'd say.
Okay. We're good with that?
Well, there's a practical question, and what happens at the end of 2013, if there's no action taken, does that seventy-five dollars go away, go to zero? If there's no action taken by the board, then there is no fee?
Don't you think that'll be addressed? Are you going to put that into the motion?
Now, July one.
No, sir, I just, I, well, you can, but.
I, I will say, all right, let me, let me finish my, let me amend my motion, okay? I'm going to amend it. And I'm going to say that, um, the 2013, 2014 budget year, the, the, the rates will be adjusted for the 2013, 2014 budget year prior to that date. Prior to the, the, uh.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, when it goes into.
Prior to July one, twenty.
I can't use that number, I guess, for the same motion.
You can use that number, you just have to use a different.
Well, I'd say prior to July one, twenty thirteen, fourteen, July thirteen, because I'd be the thirteen, fourteen.
Well, if you really want to be technical, you can be seventy-five dollars and fifty cents of July one of 2011. And then a hundred and fifty.
Seventy-five and then a hundred and fifty one year later.
Okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is effective July first, 2012.
For seventy-five dollars.
The annual non-resident membership fee shall be increased to seventy-five dollars per person and shall be payable, and shall be payable on July first, 2012, for that fiscal year.
Oh, no, but for July twelfth for that fiscal year.
Okay, and the following year for budget year thirteen, 2013, 2014, prior to that date, then the commissioners will convene to determine what the new rate will be effective for the 2013, 2014 budget.
Yeah.
All right, that's the motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries three-two with Holmes, Stamey, and Holder in favor, and Bowman and Aletta in opposition. And I have to say, that's probably the liveliest, um, discussion we've had since the law of Lawley Pines. Government, government at its best. All right, moving on to finance, we have a resolution requesting authorization to amend the ACCG defined benefit plan for Henry County employees. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, Exhibit Number Two. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the Board. I'm here before you tonight to, um, ask the board to, um, approve the resolution to amend the ACCG defined benefit plan for Henry County employees.
All right, if you remember, we've had, we had discussion about this, um, already. Is there any questions or comments for Mr., Ms. Bush? If not, I'll entertain a motion for, for approval.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Moving on to the county attorney, we have a resolution requesting approval of compensation to the probate judge for extrajudicial duties as the vital records custodian, and that's Exhibit Number Three. Latonya Wiley, County Attorney, is our presenter.
Good evening. The first resolution pertaining, pertaining to the probate judge of Henry County concerns her duties that she performs as the vital records custodian for Henry County. Um, in August of this year, uh, we received a request from the probate judge to consider the retroactive payment of, um, compensation due her under Georgia law in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars annually for providing this service. Under Georgia law, the counties are required to pay the probate judge the lesser amount of the total amount of fees collected for vital service, vital record services, or seventy-five hundred dollars. To date, the county has received in this year alone, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for vital records. Um, so obviously, the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars is less than that. Before this, this year, historically, since 2006, um, the amount has always been in excess of seventy-five hundred dollars. So, before you as a resolution authorizing the retroactive payment of the, the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars to the probate judge, um, from 2006 until the end of this year and beginning 2013, this payment will be incorporated into her monthly salary that she receives from the county. I would ask that the resolution before you be amended to include in the next-to-the-last whereas clause, that the judge of the probate court, Judge Powell, has requested the retroactive payment that was left out. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them in this time.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Aletta.
Just for clarification, I, you mentioned retroactive, and most people can do the math, but we're talking about a forty-five thousand dollar payment, and that payment will be made, um, before the end of this year, and will pay her current, through the end of the year, and then starting January next year, uh, the seventy-five hundred dollars would be paid in equal installments. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And when it says equal installments, is that monthly or something?
Uh, it'll be equal, it'll be a portioned out through the, um, bi-weekly payments that she receives as her salary.
Okay.
Monthly, she pays monthly. I'm, I stand corrected. She pays, she is paid monthly.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bowman.
Uh, there's, uh, I think I already know the answer to this, but all of our judges receive supplemental payments from the county, but does Judge Powell receive?
Yes. Every judge in Henry County does receive a supplemental payment from county funds, from the general funds. This particular duty has been held by the courts as being extrajudicial outside of the normal course and scope of her duties as a judge. And I would add, thank you for reminding me, I meant to say, for the public, um, that the law allows the Department of Human Resources to satisfy this service. If we do that, and y'all choose to do that, and no longer have the probate judge do it, then the State Department of Human Resources retains one hundred percent of the fees, and so the county will be losing those fees.
But, and, and speaking of the, of the supplemental, is that a, is that a rule of law that we have to provide that for all the judges?
No, sir, it's not. It's something you all make that determination. I think every budget year when you all are reviewing your budget, that's something y'all look at. So, no, it's not a requirement.
But it also has to stay, doesn't it have to stay in play as long as they're in office?
Yes, you cannot reduce.
Well, it's to their, in their election year, not as long as they're in office, but that, those, those items could be changed, uh, at, at the end of that, their term for, before the proceeding, the next term, right?
That's right. You cannot affect an elected individual's salary during the term of their, during their term, but you could impose a rule that would be effective at the expiration of the term, yes.
Do you, do you know how much money the, uh, that that supplemental is for Judge Powell?
I would defer to the county Finance Director or the county manager on that. I can't recall.
I do know it now.
That's okay, that's all right.
I can tell you this, it was eighty percent of the Superior Court judge's supplement, and recently, we, we had a resolution come before the board that adjusted the way that that calculation was done, and I don't, I can't write offhand and remember exactly how that calculation. I think it's now a percentage of the total payment, total payment of a particular judge, state, or, or superior, but I can't remember the exact. But I know when it was based on the prior one, her, her calculation, or the probate judge's calculation was the OCGA minimum plus eighty percent of the Superior Court judge's supplement.
Do, do other counties our size have, and, and I'm, I'm kind of moving away from the Judge Powell, I'm actually talking about all the judges. Do other counties our size do supplemental, and do they do it in the same amounts? I mean, is this, it seems like this is something that we did in, maybe we did it in good times.
Oh, three. I think historically, what I have been receiving is that the supplemental pay scale in the way that is being computed, eighty percent or percentages of, uh, beginning with the chief judge downward salary, uh, was implemented in oh-three, is what I have been told.
That's correct. One of those counties that was used doing that calculation is Cherokee County, which is very similar to our size, and they have a supplement for their judge.
But it, it's not a requirement that we do that. We're, we're, I'm, 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 I'm trying to figure out why we actually do it, and, and also, just, um, just on that same note, uh, do any of the secretaries get supplemental pay as well?
I don't know that.
I do know that. We have state-paid employees such as, um, a judge's, uh, executive assistant. We have some that are county-paid and some that are state-paid. And to basically keep them on an even kill, if their pays were different, Henry County did implement a supplement for those positions.
So, we have, we have several supplemental pay that we do. That, that's, that's all I had. I think it would be, uh, in the twenty to thirty thousand dollar range, but I believe the chief judge was like thirty-six thousand in supplemental. So, that puts, that would put Judge Powell around twenty-five thousand plus from that. I got a calculator, but I don't really want to fool with it right now.
Yeah, and, and I'll say, Commissioner, that the problem is a policy reason undergirding the decision to supplement that other jurisdictions, including Henry County, engage in. Um, it's because we want to attract quality folks who run for the office, and I've heard, I've heard colleagues of mine say they would take a pay cut by becoming a judge. So, you know, you want to attract the highest, the brightest folks to hold those offices, and that may be a policy reason that some jurisdictions, including Henry County, um, consider in implementing a supplement.
Well-stated. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments pertaining to this resolution? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners approving additional compensation to the Henry County probate judge per her request for extrajudicial duties performed as the vital records custodian for Henry County, Georgia, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to prove by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Aletta. All in favor? Motion carries five-zero. The next item is a resolution also requesting approval of compensation to the probate judge for extrajudicial duties performed as a United States government passport agents, and agent, and that's handout number three.
Yes, um, Madam Chairman.
Actually, that's handout number four.
Handout number four. This is an additional, outside of the normal scope of judicial functions, service that the Henry County probate judge performs. She is designated by the Secretary of State for the United States of America to be a passport agent, and the federal law allows passport agents to receive fees for that. The money that comes in, the vast majority of it is sent back to the federal government, and Henry County retains some portion of that. Um, historically, Judge Powell's predecessor, in 2003, there was a resolution, um, allowing, um, her predecessor to receive a seventy-five hundred dollar annual payment for performing that service. Um, this resolution seeks to continue that, and I will also add a modification to the whereas clause to insert the, the language that the probate judge of Henry County has requested the retroactive payment from 2006 to the present, um, for the payment of those fees. And similar to the previous motion, beginning January one, 2012, um, the annual fees incurred from that point forward would be periodically paying her monthly paycheck. So, I would ask the board to approve the resolution as written.
Does any board member have a, Mr. Aletta?
Same, same question, County Attorney, and that is, uh, this again is going to be another forty-five thousand dollar payment based on the retroactive, forty-five hundred dollars for six years.
That's correct. Um, I think it, when Judge Powell said it, when her initial contact with, uh, the county in August was that, when the census numbers came in, her salary increased somewhat because of the population increase. The probate judge's salary is based upon the population size, and she took a look at her salary compensation and discovered that for the six years that she has been in this position, that those, that money had not been paid, and that's how the conversation began. So, yes, it would be retroactive for those six years.
Trying to establish the amount. And to that extent, uh, Mr. Bush, the ninety thousand dollar payment that's going to be made, that is not a budgeted item, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, not saying it shouldn't be paid, but I'm just asking a question. The other is that the fees are twenty-two thousand dollars that have been collected, and if I subtract the seventy-five hundred dollars from it, do we have employees who specifically do this, or a number of employees who participate in doing this? And what kind of a cost are we looking at on the county's behalf to collect these twenty-two thousand dollars of fees, which after paying the seventy-five hundred, leaves us with fourteen-five? And what I understand is, the county does not have to offer this service. There are other agencies and places that people can get passports. I've mailed mine, requested mine by mail. So, to the, I guess what I'm asking is, is this possibly a loss operation based on the fees that we're paying?
We currently employ a, uh, there's an employee at the probate office that is a passport agent, if you will, part-time position. The pay is, um, roughly sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand dollars a year would, would benefit with the, uh, workers' comp and FICA taxes as well. So, if you look at the twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand dollars we collected in 2011, minus the seventy-five hundred, minus the seventeen thousand, it is a loss. I will say, however, that in the current year, in the first six months, or in the first three months of this year, because of the postal service going to a different type of facility, we, that amount of money has risen up a little bit to the point to where, in a full year, it looks like we would potentially break even.
For this year, but it's been a loss in prior years.
Yes, basically, since about 2006, we've collected about, um, I think it's a little under a hundred thousand dollars, and so, but the tick-up is coming, it is, it has definitely stepped up because of the postal service in the last, I think that happened in March, so we haven't had it that long.
I think the part-time employee was hired in July.
The part-time employee was hired this July, so they haven't been here for a full year. We would have had, if this person's here for a full year, it's a seventeen thousand dollar cost, plus the seventy-five hundred, and we estimate we should be somewhere around the twenty-five thousand dollar range by the end of this year.
So, what I understand you're saying, then, is up until this year, we could make money. But when we start seeing a rise in collections, we also added the equivalent in cost to try to achieve that extra revenue.
And Judge Powell did also mention that this person, although payroll clerk, I mean, a passport clerk, she is, she does do other duties as well. So, I can't say the whole payment would have to go toward that, but that's her title.
Judge Powell has also indicated in the discussions that she would consider foregoing, if the county was upside down, foregoing providing this service. It is a service to the citizens, but she would consider that if the financial burden to the county was there, and you all did not want to incur that.
Mr. Bowman?
Just clarification, the, does the post office not do passports anymore?
They changed, they changed this rule to by appointments only. You have to make appointments. So, according to Judge Powell, she saw a marked increase in that activity in her office as a result of-
Because of appointments, okay. Yeah, I understand. I just, I thought I, I misunderstood what was being said. I thought they were saying that the post office didn't do it anymore.
And I will add that, you know, under federal law, you know, there are, any person who is specifically designated by the Secretary of State can become a passport agent. That person would just have to go through the requisite training experience, and back, pass the appropriate background checks, or an employee of the clerk of any state court of records. So, it's not limited. There are about six different categories of folks who could serve in that capacity.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bush, I think you clarified this, but I just want to make sure I was clear. This is a $90,000 hit to the general budget, correct?
That is correct. $45,000 for each service on retro pay, $90,000 back pay.
Times two.
You know, I had asked this question, too. I'm curious, when the state passes these provisions for instance, in this case, I know in smaller counties that probate judges probably don't have the type of income or the type of hours that our probate judge has. And so, when they pass these statewide laws, and they create these things, I don't think they really took into consideration the fact that some judges would be compensated very well with their salaries. And they were trying to assure that probate judges in smaller counties would have the ability to have a salary for services they perform. Obviously, we know the judge doesn't physically put her hands on passports. She has staff that does that. Where in other counties, they probably don't have that option available to them. So, that may be an issue that the legislature needs to take a look at.
Well, I don't know that, you know, keep in mind that the passport is federal law.
It's federal.
So, that would be the Secretary of State. But your point is well-taken with respect to the-
Vital records.
Vital records, which is the state law provision.
Yes. Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving additional compensation to the Henry County probate judge upon her request for extrajudicial duties performed as a United States government passport agent, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alletta, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Did anyone sign up for public comment? County manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
County attorney, anything additional? Upcoming meetings and events, Thursday, November 24, and Friday, November 25. All county offices will be closed in observance of Thanksgiving. Also, we have the Turkey Day 5K, which senior services will be a beneficiary of this year. Formerly, it was known as Huffin' for Stuffin', and there should be some information on that with senior services, if anyone's interested in participating in that event.
Madam Chairman, will you go any further? Will you be running that event this year?
I will be.
Okay, thank you.
Not in a turkey suit, though.
Okay.
Monday, November, Monday, December 5, at 9:00 a.m. Are you gonna be running that?
I will run it. I'm in a turkey suit, but-
Okay, I'm gonna see if you're there. Monday, December 5, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. And Tuesday, December 6, the meeting has been canceled. If there's no further business to come before the board, Mr. Alletta?
I'd like to at least get an opportunity to announce that I do have a quarterly town hall meeting this Thursday, the 17th, at Dutch Town, elementary, at 7:00 p.m. And I welcome everybody from the county, not just in District 2.
All right, are there any other district announcements? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, motion?
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second?
I'll make first tonight, yes.
Second by Mr. Alletta, is there any more discussion about the senior services? All right, all in favor of adjourning? Motion carries 5-0, we stand adjourned.